Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, April 13th, 2022. I have a meeting announcement. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city website and the City Channel, Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Our first order of business is rule call. Madam Clerk, please take the floor.
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Kelsmith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle. Seven members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to just first say that Councilwoman Lavelle, I'm cheering today in place of Councilwoman Lavelle. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state the comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. May we have the first registered speaker, please, and please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. And the first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi, what's up?
Good morning.
Morning, Naomi.
Hi, Teresa. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bonaire. Not only do the property owners of Bonaire not consent to anything but a green space to replace the school, we absolutely do not agree to reapportionment. Forget it. Michael J. Mullen reflection by Battalion Chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Fire Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loves sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all of its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable, regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate husband, father, brother, relative, and friend. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space is a needed reparation for Bonaire. Do your part. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bonaire. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Beltshever and Downtown, Helsinki, Finland, Global Intelligence Society U.S. National Candidate Presidency in 2024. Vote by voter verification. This is an email on public comment sent to Brenda Prey, 11 April 2022, from me. I have secured the agreement with Pittsburghers to do public comment at city council meetings accompanied by protection via bodyguards and lawyers. These Pittsburgh U.S. citizens may speak for three minutes completely in the following languages: Alza, Nihongo, Espanol, Deutsch. All presentations will be recorded internally using Global Intelligence Society camera and channel transmission technology from multiangles for nationwide broadcast via the National Intelligence Information Network, bypassing the City Channel and any censored recordings broadcast on KDKA, WTAE, WPXI, or any other local channel. The multi-angle recordings will show entry and exits and rude table talk by Pittsburgh city councilors not provided by the severely limited visual vectors of the current recording matrix. These changes will occur regardless of any efforts to change the Pittsburgh City Council rules of council on public comment. Any attempt by presiders at city council meetings to interfere with the civil right of citizens to freedom of speech during their public comment will be recorded, transcribed, and transmitted to Pennsylvania and U.S. federal civil rights enforcement agencies and courts. Presiders at meetings may be obliged to present warrants to evict any public commentator from the council room for any breaches of non-existent rules over profanity or other non-existent rules regarding inappropriate PC content. What is done during public comment in Pittsburgh will be broadcast nationwide outside the control of the offices of council and mayor by the Global Intelligence Society and worldwide by the GIS via the Global Intelligence Information Network to cities in South America, Africa, Asia, and Europe with which I and the GIS now have links independent of the Pittsburgh City Government as I have provided in my public comments, January to April 2023. This email is public and may be shared with anyone. I am opposed to any censorship of citizen speech in any form. City councilors are always late for council meetings. City clerk personnel are never late. City councillor information may be sloppy, intelligence fuzzy. City clerk personnel information is usually precise, intelligence sharp. City councillor behavior may be erratic, self-centered, and undisciplined. City clerk personnel under the current clerk only very infrequently say. And I don't say that as a compliment but as what I consider to be objective fact.
Our next speaker is Andrea Boikowicz.
Hi, my name is Andrea Boikowicz and I live in Oakland and I am the Assistant Director of Oakland Planning and Development Corporation and I'm testifying a little bit off the cuff today in support of Inclusionary Zoning's extension to Bloomfield and Polish Hill. And I apologize if there's noise in the background here next to a construction site. There's a great deal of construction in Oakland and we are eager to see the extension of the Inclusionary Zoning Overlay District to Oakland that will be coming before you later in May or in June. And we trust that the enthusiastic support that Inclusionary Zoning has enjoyed in Lawrenceville and hopefully now in the extension to Bloomfield and Polish Hill will also carry us through to seeing it adopted everywhere in Oakland where it is desperately needed. And I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Gross for her leadership in this issue and trust that you will all see the advantages to the city, to the region, and particularly to these neighborhoods in providing this kind of something with support and protection. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Nina Sacco. Dr. Nina Sacco is next.
Good morning. My name is Nina and I am a lifelong resident of the Bloomfield community. Bloomfield is a place where generations of families live. I am a fourth-generation resident and I am raising my three children here. While inclusionary housing is the topic today, I would like to express the need for senior housing in the Bloomfield neighborhood. This was prevented when developers attempted to purchase the St. Joseph's parking lot. Seniors who have dedicated their lives and their tax dollars to this neighborhood deserve an affordable place to live. My second critical and immediate concern is the public health and safety threat presented by the property at the corner of Pearl Street and Liberty Avenue, St. Joseph's Church. A 2022 building evaluation and a 2015 building evaluation conducted by credentialed architects and engineers evidences the ongoing and severe deterioration of the building. Bricks would insulate regularly fall from the building. Recently, a large piece of copper on the roof became unattached when we experienced high levels of wind. The February 2022 report states, and I quote, "that the majority of the building's systems are beyond useful repair in terms of state of repair. Approximately 80% of the building's support systems are in need of total replacement." Recommendation states, "Please note, there are life-safety considerations that should be strongly considered in any course of action that will retain the function of this building." The appendix states, "Despite the fact that the building remains an architectural complement to the community, St. Joseph's Church is burdened with an overwhelming volume of deferred maintenance that has far-reaching effects with the need for significant investment." Next to a photo of the crumbling wall, the text box states, "Obvious damage, the result of water infiltration, shown to impress an understanding of exposure to asbestos-led paint, which are now exposed to the environment." The 2015 evaluation called for the demolition of the boiler house and the 2022 report noted that the hole in the roof existed. The separate structure houses the heating system, which is documented as being exposed to the elements. Bricks fall from this structure and from the smokestack. Is the fire code requiring yearly furnace inspection up to date? Is the property up to date on all inspections, specifically the facade inspection that is to be completed every five years? The immediate public health and safety threat that is twice documented by experts is being ignored as this building is being utilized daily. As a District VII constituent and a taxpayer, I request the assistance of the councilwoman to ensure that public health and safety of those walking near this property and those entering it, who also deserve to be able to breathe freely without the risk and threat to asbestos exposure, be provided. Thank you and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dr. Sacco. Ariana Scott. Ariana Scott, not on. Thank you. Ariana Franzino, not on. Sam Spearing, on. Sam Spearing.
I'm here. Good morning. My name is Sam Spearing and I work as the Housing and Mobility Coordinator for Bloomfield Development Corporation, the registered community organization for our neighborhood. I also am a resident of Bloomfield as a renter on Pearl Street. I'm here today to speak in support of the expansion of inclusionary zoning to Bloomfield and Polish Hill. Thanks to Councilwoman Gross and our great partners like Lawrenceville United and Lawrenceville Corporation, we've seen the success of IZ in Lawrenceville and want to replicate this tool for Bloomfield as well. We know, according to data collected by the Planning Department, that 40.84% of renters in Bloomfield are cost-burdened, which is more than double the citywide rate of 19.57%. City planning also has a displacement vulnerability index created using data on income, education, race, and rental status to analyze risk of displacement. The index showed that out of five census tracts in Bloomfield, two of them were classified as vulnerable and one is somewhat vulnerable. Many of the amenities that are driving new development, higher housing costs, and increased desirability in Bloomfield's housing market demonstrate the advantages of creating new affordable units. Bloomfield is walkable, bikeable, and well-served by public transportation. Grocery stores, farmers' markets, and healthcare facilities are all easily accessible from Bloomfield. Locating new quality affordable units in neighborhoods like Bloomfield is essential to allowing low-income renters access to the same opportunities as everyone else. I also want to acknowledge two of the biggest questions we heard repeatedly during multiple public meetings about inclusionary zoning. The first question was, "Why only 10%, demonstrating a consistent desire for more ambitious affordable housing goals in the city of Pittsburgh?" Second question we heard several times was, "Why not do this in my neighborhood or in other neighborhoods?" And to that end, we'd like to encourage further expansion of inclusionary zoning, and we heard someone from Oakland speaking to that just a little bit ago. Our neighborhood and neighbors need tools that create new affordable housing units in Bloomfield. I'm strongly in support of expanding inclusionary zoning to Bloomfield and Polish Hill and beyond. I also want to quickly thank Councilwoman Gross, Mayor Ganey, the Planning Commission, and all the planning staff that have worked on this legislation for everything that they've done. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And our last registered speaker is, oh, I'm sorry, there's two more. John Rhodes. John Rhodes.
Hello. My name is John Rhodes. I live at 3030 Wigan Street in Polish Hill. I serve as the Chair of the Housing and Development Committee for the PHCA, which is the registered community organization for our neighborhood. I'm here to speak in favor of expanding inclusionary zoning to Polish Hill and Bloomfield. First off, I want to thank Councilwoman Gross for her leadership on this. She brought the iPod into Lawrenceville several years ago, worked diligently to make that overlay permanent, and now works to expand this powerful tool to other neighborhoods in her district who have advocated for years to bring more affordable options into our communities. I also want to express our gratitude to Mayor Ganey, who has been an outspoken advocate for expanding inclusionary zoning. Next, I want to thank the dedicated civil servants in the Planning and Zoning Departments who have been the shepherds of this proposal. And I want to speak directly to why the PHCA is asking for inclusionary zoning to expand our neighborhood. In short, community members are being priced out. For instance, in Polish Hill, the median sale price in the neighborhood from 2015 to 2018 has more than tripled, from $67,500 to $217,500. Many neighbors know someone who has been displaced from the home they are renting or priced out of the opportunity of owning in their neighborhood. According to the Forge PAGH website, 36% of renters in our neighborhood are cost-burdened. There are imminent developments that could reshape our neighborhood. We want to be able to preserve a balanced approach to development that ensures people of all income levels can find a home. I also want to thank our fellow community organizations, obviously Christina Howell and Sam Spearing from Bloomfield Development Corporation, who have been incredible partners in our efforts to bring inclusionary zoning to our corners of Pittsburgh, and Lawrenceville United and Lawrenceville Corporation, who have worked so hard in partnership with the council member to bring Pittsburgh's first inclusionary zoning to their neighborhood. I also want to thank OPDC for their support today and we're excited about the potential expansion of IZ into parts of Oakland very soon. The PHCA is pursuing many different approaches to promoting affordability in our neighborhood and expanding inclusionary zoning will be one very important aspect of our multipronged approach. That said, a successful strategy for affordability must be mindful of a large integrated geographic area. That is one reason why we work in close collaboration with our adjacent community organizations. We also work with them because we are inspired and strengthened by working with them. This effort to expand the IZO is a shining example of that. Today, the PHCA asks for council support to bring IZ to Polish Hill and Bloomfield. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And our last registered speaker is Ruby Velasco. Ruby Velasco is not on. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address city council? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. I'm at Katy Werf. It's tiresome in the Hill District. When I heard this last man praising Mrs. Gross, I have another opinion of her. Anytime I can come to the meeting and hear that we have such a large community, such a large city with so many communities, and her and the mayor made the decision that the new chief would not come to our community for us to ask him questions, to speak to us as he did to other communities. Citizens, you don't, you need to understand why. It bothers me so. Because when that happened and he did not come, chief, the chief, I can't think of his name, did not come up in our neighborhood. The police went down on Fifth Avenue. This Dave Field has a car lot. They went down and they were, they tasered this man. He's an elderly citizen, a businessman. They showed it on the TV because they said when Chief Harper was there, they would pick at him and Chief Harper would call and say, "Leave him alone." But when they tasered him that day, they were saying it in the, "Who can you call? Who can you call?" Because Chief Harper was gone. So, we had a businessman, he is a businessman, tasered because they had been picking at him for years. And when we wanted, and the reason why I'm really upset because that had happened after the chief that went to everybody's neighborhood and not ours, because if he had come to our neighborhood up in the Hill District, we would have told them. And I know Mr. Fields would also explain that these police, you don't see what they do. Now, me and Dr. Miller, which I, I really think that Dr. Miller, yes, needs to listen to this man. This man is educated, but he also has a life experience. He says that they don't kill as many black people as they say. I disagree. Even my daughter said, "Mommy, I think he's right." No. See, at one time, we couldn't take pictures and they would actually chase you away. But we know now that we can stand and watch and if you have a camera, take a picture of it. At one time, they would chase you away. Now, which Hop Kentridge, who used to work with the District Attorney, the older man, come down and explained how they would walk up to him, even him, even though he had, was elected official, call him Boy. You know, Boy is a very derogative name for an older man, almost 50 or 60, 70 years old. I want you to understand, I come down because you do not know what you don't know. And then yesterday, what I'm upset about, there was two women, black women, and I said, "You come and speak." No. And one said, "I just come to see what the city is about, how they run the business." I said, "Well, speak. Come up and speak." And when he said, "You're not allowed to," they wouldn't speak. So, they're not going to speak. If he keep on saying that we can't speak. Sorry, sorry.
Thank you. And is there any further speakers in the audience? Seeing no further speakers, that moves us on to our next order of business. And we have our Standing Committee agenda. Begin with the Finance and Law Committee, the deferred paper. Madam Clerk?
Bill 196, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Core Business Technologies in the Amount of $2,062.50 for Integration with the CSS Tax System.
Motion to approve in a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Owen, no? Owen in favor?
Hi.
Bill's preliminary approved.
Bill's been affirmed. Positively.
Okay. Positive recommendation, that's what he says. Okay. New papers. Madam Clerk?
Bill 234, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to accept a donation from the 14th Ward Youth Baseball Association of a batting cage system in Mellon Park valued at $9,915.83.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion?
Discussion, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just really wanted to acknowledge the 14th Ward Youth Baseball Association, the community partner that they have been for so long and all that they do for our communities. I know that Councilwoman O'Connor would agree that, obviously, he grew up with them, but just how integral they are for Squirrel Hill and the 14th Ward. And this donation to Mellon Park is going to help so many more teams than just them. I mean, Mellon Park is a really, really busy and well-used park when it comes to the ballfields. And this donation is just, I'm so grateful to them as we, as we work to upgrade the park and make it an even better and more streamlined place for as many teams as possible. So, I wanted to thank them. They were here last week.
Thank you.
Madam President, quickly, I would just like to, like to thank Councilwoman Strasburger as well for, we sort of jointly represent 14th Ward Baseball and they do a really good job and a donation of Mellon is going to go a long way because that field is being used a lot more in the past few years. So, just thank them for all their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other members? I'm just going to say, it's really unusual when you have an athletic association donating to the city of Pittsburgh. Most of our athletic associations need help, but I've always been impressed with this organization because, you know, my husband and I ran an association and we, we played against them and they were just always so amazing, them and the little dynamos. But I remember when Councilwoman O'Connor was a coach. So, I just want to make sure I mention that.
Do you also want to mention what team won, or do you want to save that for later?
I don't want to embarrass you.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Remember, honestly, I can't remember, but I do remember how amazing they always have been. And I hope that one day all of our associations are in the position to donate. Okay, with that said, Owen in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Bill's firmly positive. Has a positive recommendation. And next bill, please.
Bill 240, Resolution Establishing a Pittsburgh City School District Partnership.
Do approve.
A second motion to approve, a second. Any discussion? You're not going to say anything? I'm going to say something.
Oh, God's blessing.
I just want to make sure that we're doing this in collaboration with the school district, with the mayor's office, and of course, city council. And...
I've met with multiple members of the school board. President of the, president of the school board and the vice president, who is, whose job it is to, who has been assigned to do these intergovernmental things, they're considering doing a similar parallel resolution in the, in the board. And so, I'm, I'm willing to make sure we're quick to talk to them. Yeah, it's very simple. These are our kids. These are all of our kids. And we need to coordinate their activities. One of my major concerns is actually not school time. It's the out-of-school time events that I'm mostly concerned about. I think the school board, you know, does a pretty good job of educating our kids. But once they leave school, especially in, in some of our more challenging neighborhoods, there's not a coordination of what happens to them from 3:00 until 7:00 the next day, right? There's no, there's no coordination of the, of the extent. For, for many of us who kids, you know, may go to schools that are, that are high-performing, they, they go home with two hours of homework. You know, when my kids were in grade school, they came home with two hours of homework. And that was required. It was not, and for my daughter, it was a challenge. So, it took her four hours, right? It was every night. And just because a child may not be in a high-performing school, we do know they need these supplemental educational opportunities. And there is no coordinated way. There's no, like, we have direct attack where I say, you know, if our, if the kids are going to go into our rec centers. There is not, that I know of, we've not coordinated with the school board to have a curriculum that's supplemental to what they're having in school, that's, you know, homework completion. There are so many ways that we could come together with, with these kids in mind to use a resource, whether it's summer programs or after-school programs. But I think we need the participation of both to do it seamlessly. So, it's not, it's in, and so that's really the desire. Desire is not at all to, to tell anybody what to do, but rather to create a place where we can coordinate all the resources that we both have, maybe given other resources. So, there's seamless, there is a seamless, as much as we can, a seamless, consistent approach to dealing with these kids. Last but not least, we had, again, I wasn't saying that, but we had, where the principal of one of our schools talked about trauma, the trauma of these children and the need for more trauma therapy in a grade school. He says he's seen more traumatized kids since the pandemic than he's seen in his whole career, that the kids literally are just, and, and the schools don't have enough resources to deal with the trauma. And so, one of the things that we've talked about that we need to operationalize is, you know, we have, we have church mothers, right? We have, we have this, this, these, these church mothers who would be willing to come and baby these kids and give them candy and help them, but we don't have a vehicle to, to, to link these seniors with these children in a productive way sometimes. And so, all that needs to be worked out and you need a vehicle to do it. So, that's a long explanation of why I think it's important. And last thing, it's based on a California model where this has really been pioneered and championed is in, in the state of California. The state actually has a funding office that, that funds the collaboration between school boards and municipalities to create this seamless integration. And so, that's sort of where the idea came from. Other schools, of course, across country, and school boards are doing it. That's a long conversation. But again, I'm willing to hold and talk. I'm willing to do whatever you want.
I want to pass, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I just wanted to, since we are discussing, acknowledge that I see you have picked up on the work that council has been doing for quite some time. And so, I want to just acknowledge the work. My very first year, Madam Clerk set up, Madam President set up a commission on education that I participated in. She assigned me to it. And there was an entire report that we'll need to, it's probably in legislature, that was resolved, that year-long effort. You had school board members, you had parents, you had teachers, and you had students at this table, at this, this exact table where we met, and as well as council members. And I think it was, the, the, the actual writer of the report was former city councilman and school board representative, Patrick Dowd, who was also at the table. And... And, um, really talked a lot about these exact items, after-school time, how we can try, right? The, the most logical thing to do is to look at what assets and resources and jurisdictions and capacities the city has and what's assets, assets, resources, jurisdictions and capacities the school district has in order to best serve our children that are, our children jointly, right? Our families, with our, our families jointly and our neighborhoods that are our neighborhoods jointly. Um, and there's a lot of room for improvement there. I noticed that in, um, section four, item two, you talk about childcare at length. And I just wanted to acknowledge the very long history that this council has, especially with the leadership of the female representatives on the council in forwarding and foregrounding the importance of childcare and, and the funding that this council has, um, supported, which has leveraged about four million dollars, which is hitting the streets right now, um, due to the work, um, that this, um, council has done. Um, and I noticed that item, section four, item four is universal early childcare and education, which we know our former colleague, Councilwoman Natalia Rudiak, championed extensively at her time on council and talked about at every opportunity. Um, and, 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 um, the, the amount of work that, uh, she put into that should be acknowledged. Um, and then I noticed that section four, um, item five, transportation, talks about the chronic, um, problem that is transportation. And, and especially that for the person who doesn't have kids in the system may not know, our kids can go to this largely a lot, they have a lot of school choice. But that means that there is a dispersion of destinations. And so, or just, you know, the, we're, the origin of the kid's trip during the day in the end is a, a giant logistical tangle. Um, and that we really saw a crisis when bus drivers were out with COVID. Um, and now that it is cut in with quarantine, some of those subcontracted transportation companies are, are struggling to get back up to capacity. Um, and that also this body has worked on those school trips, right? And what are the journeys to school? And how can Domi do better at figuring out where school buses are, where safe trips are, where safe sidewalks are, where safe crossings are? Um, and one of the things we, I think that we can contribute here, that we have made a little bit of steps towards, um, that I know a lot of members have talked about over the years, is increasing the, um, number of crossing guards that are on our operating, right? And our operating budget and in our, um, uh, you know, ability to, to increase. But it, there takes some policy detangling there. So there's lots of good pieces here, but I just thought, since we were discussing, that we should acknowledge that this is pulling together a lot of pieces that other people have, have worked on over the years. So, um, eager to see how it progresses and I'm supportive today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? I'm just going to add a little bit to it because I, I have to, because I did help work on the very first one. And I think I went into it without an agenda and we made sure that we had everyone at the table, including charter schools, private schools, Catholics. So because we heard from all of them, because if you, you look at the city of Pittsburgh and the school district, there's about twenty-two thousand kids now in Pittsburgh Public Schools, down from seventy-seven thousand students in the district. And there's about, I think, around forty-four thousand kids in the city of Pittsburgh, which means almost half of our children, if not half of our children, attend school elsewhere. So if we're not including them in this, in this process, we're leaving out half of the kids in the city of Pittsburgh. Who, in, when our kids get home in the evening, they don't care where they go to school. They're on, if they're on the same street, they're playing together. And if they're in the same neighborhood, they're, they're together. So I want to make sure that whatever we do is inclusive of, of all of the children that, that are in Pittsburgh and wherever they go to school. And I think this goes to the larger picture, Reverend, you and I had spoken with the athletic associations, funding the athletic associations, making sure there's facilities open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week around the city in north, southeast, west and central. So we're, where there is a safe place for people to go, um, especially our children, because we have a lot of kids that are, um, out on the streets, you know, through, through the night. So I think if you're not including all those things and including parents, the one thing I have learned, because I, that's what I did for Pittsburgh Public Schools, parent community engagement, was, um, if you're leaving out the parents, you're leaving out the, you're not really helping the kids. You really have to make sure that they're part of this equation. So I hope that, um, we're engaging the county on some parenting programs and drug and alcohol counseling and employment program, because the county has, although the school district may not have a ton of money and the city may not have a ton of money, the county has a billion dollars for these types of services. And we, it is time we had this conversation, we all talk about it here at the table. But I think maybe we should have a post-agenda and, um, have the county exec, his team come to the table to talk about what services are provided in the city, what services are needed. And so that there's a needs assessment done so that we, we're actually making sure the services that they are providing in the city are ones that are actually going to benefit and address this violence in the city. I mean, I, I, the fact that we have an office of community health and safety is wonderful, but we shouldn't be paying for that. We should have had that in place, to be honest with you, from the county. There should be some partnerships. And I think the battle with the school district is always going to be between foundations and the teachers' unions, um, elected officials, and I think a lot of other people, but I, I just, I want to make sure that we're not getting in that battle. We're coming for solutions for our kids, period. No matter where they go to school, we're here for the kids. And stay focused on that without any pre, you know, pre, without any agendas. That's just making sure we're taking care of them. And as far as early childhood, I, I, I appreciate that you mentioned, uh, Councilwoman Rudiak, because she did do a lot for that, but so did you, Councilwoman Gross. And so I want to make sure I mention that as well. And I think that, uh, the Women's Caucus has been happy to pick that up too, over the years. So thank you all for your work on that. That's it for me. Anybody else? Hey, we have a motion to, I'm sorry, can we, we already had a motion in a second. Owen in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any?
Mandatory recommendation.
Mandatory recommendation. It's a little bit different than it is on Tuesday. Thank you, everyone. And can we have a motion to approve the invoices? In a second, any discussion? Owen in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, invoices are approved. And inner, uh, inner departmental transfers, motion to approve? Second. Owen in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I keep forgetting that one. Is he all in favor?
Yes, I got a vote. It's passed.
The mayor approved.
Yep.
Or they're passed, they passed. And our next bill, Madam Clerk?
We got a P cards.
I'm sorry, P cards at the bottom.
Motion to approve P cards.
Any discussion? Owen in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Your P cards are approved. And the next bill, please, Madam Clerk.
Bill thirty-two, ordinance amending and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title One, Administrative Article Three, Organization Chapter one sixteen, Department of Public Safety, by adding a new section one sixteen, one seven, regulation of pedestrians stops by officers of the Bureau of Police.
I know that there is a meeting, uh, in two weeks, so I'll make a motion to hold three weeks.
In a second?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Owen in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill's held for three weeks. Thank you, Councilman. And Land, Use and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the chair. Madam Clerk, we have one deferred paper.
Bill seventeen oh seven, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, zoning article one, section nine oh two oh three zoning map and amending article three overlay zoning district, chapter nine oh seven, development overlay districts nine oh seven oh eight, oh four A, to expand the boundaries of the inclusionary overlay district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Now, or Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so, uh, you all have heard the testimony. We also had a public hearing, um, last week. Um, this expansion, as I'm sure you all were familiar, um, I, all, like, all the members on the body were, were here when we created the first overlay for Lawrenceville. And then again, when we, um, made that the permanent overlay. And the clever thing that we did there was allow other neighborhoods to opt in to the overlay or other territories even. Um, and so Bloomfield and Polish Hill, you've heard me say this before, were discouraged that they weren't included in the first overlay and have been waiting and lobbied immediately to, um, be included, um, in this expansion. They are contiguous, there is a map at the end, but continuity is actually not required. Um, this is positive, positively recommended by the Planning Commission. But I'd like to say, um, for members, if you haven't heard all the testimony, that consistently, and, and maybe you've seen some of the emails too, um, what we've heard is, uh, encouraging us to make even deeper affordability, encouraging us to increase the percentage of units in each development, um, and to expand the boundaries. So that was a really consistent message from citizens, um, that was more of a disappointment that this policy is too weak and not, and not concerned that it's too strong. Um, so, uh, Bloomfield and Polish Hill, as I said, have been ready for a while. Um, this is consistent with their own neighborhood vision. Um, they have done years now of community meetings about affordability and believe that while this isn't the only policy and tool for them, that this is the, um, definitely a tool that they've been long ready for. And so I'm enthusiastically supportive. Um, I do want to offer a technical amendment. This was just an, an absolute mistake, um, doesn't affect the substance of the legislation. Um, and so it's on yellow before you. And so we'll just, section one, we'll end a sentence, we're, we're adding a period after Bloomfield and Polish Hill, um, and the rest of that sentence with the other neighborhoods is, is just being, uh, struck out. So I'd like to, uh, motion to amend.
To a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on the amendment? Owen in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, and so I, I hope that council will support. Um, and we look forward to having these protections as we have not seen any decrease in market pressure for large developments, um, in this part of the city. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam, uh, thank you, Councilwoman. Need further discussion on the bill? As amended, no discussion, Councilwoman? Were you going to say? Okay, you lead forward, I thought it was, okay. Owen in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's firmly recommended.
Bill nineteen oh six, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, zoning article four, chapter nine oh eight, public RAM districts, amending the code by the addition of a new section nine oh eight oh three D five, Oakland Sub District E, O P R E, Oakland Crossings.
Uh, motion for discussion?
Yep.
Do approve.
Motion.
Bruce says that.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. That's what I want to say. Thank you, thanks, thanks, Councilman. I, I threw that at you at the last minute, I apologize. I, I, the only reason I asked to motion to approve it was to be able to have some discussion uh, before we motion to hold for a public hearing, which we must do. Um, and I, I, I would, Madam Clerk, if I could ask you, not this moment, but if you would ultimately share the record, uh, the review and recommendation hard copies with each member so that they can see them as well. The, the question that I have, and it's, and I talked briefly with the clerk about this this morning, but I, I wanted to talk about it in more of a public arena, um, that the recommendation that came over from Planning Commission is positive based on substantive changes that council must make to the bill. And so the question I had for the clerk is, if we are required by law to hold for public hearing, uh, should the process of making the substantive changes also coincide? That we do that before we go to public hearing? We don't want to have a public hearing on the bill that we're not ultimately going to consider. So I think the motion that I want to make today, uh, and I'll take recommendations, um, is that we, we hold for public hearing, uh, as well as, uh, for consideration uh, of amending the bill as per recommendations of the Planning Commission. About right, Madam Clerk? Because my question is this then, do we, it'll, it'll continue to be on the table so as to bring it back, craft the amendments that are required by Planning Commission, make those amendments and then hold the public hearing?
Yeah, I would suggest that, you know, whatever hearings or whatever amendments are going to be offered, that we make those before the public hearing so that people will have the correct information.
So that by calling for the holding of the public, holding for public hearing? And to what? You could, you can, I can, if you, when you get a minute, I, I, can I share? Yeah.
Yes.
So you can do one of two things. You can, if you hold now for a public hearing, you can't alter the bill until after the public hearing, when it comes back to table. You can't alter the bill in the interim. So you can, you can wait, you can wait and amend it at the table, then hold it. Or you can have the public hearing and say, these are the amendments we're thinking about, and then amend it when it comes back to the table. But you can't amend the bill while it's on hold.
So can I just say we have
Solicitor.
Yeah, our solicitor here to make sure we address these. So we're not guessing at these things, we have an actual comment from the law department.
It's also it's also just a technical, you know, technicality here where it's, we get the recommendation from the Planning Commission. If, you know, the vote is, had, takes less council members to approve if we, if we, my understanding is that if we, you know, do what the Planning Commission is requesting for their approval, and that is all based on, that we wouldn't need, I mean, what's to override Planning Commission?
Five or six.
We have, can we hear from the solicitor? Do you mind?
Yeah.
Because we're all sitting here discussing.
Which, which I think is just something we do after public.
Uh, so I didn't mean to throw this into a tailspin by any means, but we, we have it on the table to take action. Would it, would it be better that I motion to hold for one week? Then we can have a discussion with law? Does that, Madam Solicitor, does that assist you? And then, and then we'll take it up again next week, understanding the, the proper process by which we must take the bill.
Okay.
Okay, so then I will motion, please, to hold, uh, forgive me, where are we, nineteen oh six, one week, please.
Okay.
Motion to hold a second, any discussion? Owen in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any abstentions, thank you. Bill's held for one week. Thank you, Councilman. And Madam Clerk, the next.
Bill sixty-five, resolution amending, resolution number eight sixty-three entitled, adopting and approving the twenty-nineteen CDBG program by transferring remaining funds from the James Street Step Reconstruction Project to the North Side Christian Health Center, seventy-six thousand dollars and traffic calming, fourteen thousand two hundred twenty dollars and fifty-four cents.
Motion to hold one week.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? Any, Owen in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill's held for one week. And the next paper, Madam?
Bill two thirty-five, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under title eleven of the Code of Ordinances, the certain site known as World of Salam, located at forty-nine oh five Fifth Avenue in Shadyside in the Seventh Ward. The owners of the properties support the nominations.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
Needs to be held for.
Didn't know if we could have a discussion since that whole thing with Bruce. Um, okay, so is the planning, is a, our solicitor had some comments. Um, and so I wanted to ask the Director of City Planning, I sent an email.
It's beheld for public.
But I want to get some clarity on this before we move forward. What's that? We have the rector or someone from city planning, Historic Review Commission.
We have, uh, Andrew Dash and Corey Lehman, Sarah Quinn. They're all online.
They're on?
According to this? Are they on? Alex? Alex, do we have Andrew Dash, Sarah Quinn?
We need to fix this.
You want to call?
We need to, we need to.
We'll call and, and get them.
There's, if there's bills on the table, we need someone from the office.
Someone from the office should be, for all these, and from now on, if they don't come to the table with their bill, we have a bill, we're going to hold it.
It's even in a hybrid fashion, I mean, it's, someone's just got to be on, online.
Right, there's no excuse with a hybrid. Going to hold it?
Hold it just for?
We hold it?
Yeah, motion, uh, motion to hold.
We can leave it open.
Oh, I, I'm going to remove the motion to hold. We're just going to hold it in the meeting.
Right. Go on to the next bill.
Bill forty-four, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official soil facilities plan for forty-eight oh eight Baum Boulevard in the Eighth Ward.
Have a motion? This is, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gross, this is Inter-Governmental Affairs Committee.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Bill has an affirmative recommendation. And new papers?
Bill 232, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works, on behalf of the city, to acknowledge and consent to a partial assignment and assumption agreement between the Pennsylvania American Water and the Bureau of Brentwood related to a December 1, 1949 service area agreement between the Allegheny County Sanitation Authority, the Bureau of Brentwood, and the city of Pittsburgh. Pennsylvania American Water seeks to purchase and operate the Bureau of Brentwood's wastewater collection system.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill has an affirmative recommendation.
Bill 233, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Proposed Land Development Located at 807 Ridge Avenue, Workforce Development and Training Center Building at the parcel numbered 8E185.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Wilson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say this is a great project. This is something that the URA is providing some financing, a financing package through the PUI, and using tax credits for this. So I wanted to just speak to the sewage facilities plan, to say that, you know, obviously full support, but just that the project is, you know, some, some great work that the URA does through PUI, and, you know, something for our region in terms of this CCAC Workforce Development Training Center that they're building. And the amount that the URA is assisting with is $8 million, so it is significant.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Bill has an affirmative recommendation. That brings us back to the bill that we were holding open.
235.
Let me see, we have.
I did, I did speak with Councilperson Strasberg, so there's no opposition to this. I guess the only question remains is, the nominator, does it have to be someone from the congregation per code? Other than that, I think we can figure that out in the.
Yeah, wait, wait.
Just to clarify, yeah, there's no objection. My name is Daniel Fritzen, Solicitor to City Council. Just in making sure everything's compliant, is just making the note that religious structures per code shall only be nominated by the owner of record. And this particular one, I don't know if the nominator is part of the congregation, or speaks to the congregation, or, I was just looking for clarity from the Planning Department as to.
Yeah.
That.
Councilwoman Strasberg. So I can understand why this would be confusing. Matthew Falcone is someone who wears many hats in our community. He's a historic preservationist, but also he happens to be the president of the Rode of Shalom congregation, so he is representing the congregation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for clarifying. Okay.
All right, motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Motion to approve, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bills, any opposed? Any abstention? The bill's held for a public hearing. And that moves us on to our meeting announcements. That, that, that ends our agenda. This evening at 6:00 PM at the Federation of Teachers on the South Side, there will be another public briefing by the Reapportionment Advisory Committee on the proposed reapportionment district maps. And in case people don't know what that is, it's redistricting for each of our council districts. If people want to go in here, let's see what they, what they're presenting. You can register to speak at the meeting by filling out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage, or by emailing cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Registration closes at 4:00 PM. On Thursday, April 14, at 6:00 PM at the Homewood Brushton YMCA, council will hold another public hearing on the city's proposed annexation of Wilkinsburg. To register to speak, excuse me, to register to speak at the hearing, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting's webpage by 3:00 PM Thursday. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Please note this hearing is in person only, and there will be chaired by Councilman Burgess. As a reminder, this Friday, April 15, city council's offices, it will be closed, and the clerk's office will be closed in observance of Good Friday. Next week, council will hold their 10:00, our 10:00 AM meeting, regular standing committee meetings, on Tuesday, April 19, and Wednesday, April 20, respectively. Speaker registration ends at 9:00 AM Tuesday and Wednesday morning. Is there anything from members?
Madam President.
Councilwoman Kraus.
Thank you. Just, in, as it relates to Bill 240, this establishment of a Pittsburgh City School District partnership, I think it needs to be said that there's a role for the Carnegie library system in that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And they are safe spaces. They are clearly safe spaces in our neighborhoods, and provide fundamental services to our, our kids, or to our families, to our population. And, and I think there's, I don't know how to do that, how we, or if we need to incorporate that in some way, but there's, there's clearly a role for our.
That's where I learned to read, and, but the way that, the way it is, the, the group can expand it to all, expand it to whatever entity it needs to.
They can create subcommittees, correct?
They create subcommittees and all sorts of things. Yes, they have great freedom to design it.
I just want that to go unsaid.
That's right. That's exactly right. Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, Councilman.
Well, I just wanted to add on to that. There is, in fact, as you know, even a generous trustee, lifetime trustee, has started a trust fund, sole, for the sole purpose of reaching lower-income children, and getting them, bringing them in the doors of the library. So I think that's something to, to add to the conversation here, and to be aware of, and there's a real strong impetus to want to do more in that regard, from that particular trustee.
The branch in Knoxville has been transformational in that neighborhood, and it has clearly become a safe space for, for not just Knoxville, but surrounding communities. And the, the manager there, Ian, Ian is, just.
He's amazing.
Oh, God, he's utterly amazing. And I can't imagine not having that library exist in that pocket of neighborhoods, and, and the value it brings. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
And I'll just, thank you. And to that, I want to say, I think that, that's also something that we talked, discussed, is that the libraries, I would like to know that they have a safety plan, because they are a place where kids are going. And I think that having a public safety director or somebody like that is important, because they have more, more visitors than any other venue in the city of Pittsburgh, so.
Say that again, please, Madam President?
Yeah, they have more visitors than any other venue in the city of Pittsburgh. So they do a tremendous work. They do have a lot of our kids.
Participation exceeds any, I believe it's actually in Allegheny County, but the number of visits exceed anything, even the sports arenas. There are more participants in the Carnegie library system than anything else. I believe it is the Allegheny County. Yeah.
So that's why they need to have a great safety plan. Thank you. Anything else from members? Oh, Happy Easter to everyone who celebrates, and I hope that everybody has a nice, long weekend. Have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
Remove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Music church.